Okay, good morning. Welcome to the Thurston County Board of County Commissioners Agenda Setting Work Session for Tuesday, October 1st, 2024. It's 9:04 a.m. My name is Ty Mensah, Chair of the Board, Vice Chair Commissioner Wayne Fournier to my left, Commissioners Emily Claus, Carolina Mejia, and Gary Edwards participating virtually. We have County Manager here Leonard Hernandez, and Assistant County Manager Rob Gelder, and Assistant County Manager Josh Cummings. Public virtual attendance is available on the Thurston County YouTube channel. We have a three-hour block of time. Don't think we're going to need all that time, but we'll get, if it stretches that far, we may take break halfway through, but I don't anticipate that. First up is a review of the proposed agenda for this afternoon's board meeting. This is the second review of that agenda, so if folks could pull that forward. The meeting is set to begin at 2:00 p.m., per usual. We'll have a pledge of allegiance to be led by Commissioner Edwards, approval of the agenda with any changes we make this morning, and then we will have a presentation for Domestic Violence Awareness Month. And I'll look to the Clerk of the Board to outline that.
Good morning, Amy Davis, Clerk of the Board. This afternoon, we'll have representatives from the Sheriff's Office and from the Prosecuting Attorney's Office to present and accept the proclamation.
Okay, this is one we do pretty annually. Any questions for Clerk of the Board? Hearing seeing none. Okay. Opportunity for the public to address the board is next. County Manager's update follows that. Anything you're preparing to report on County Manager?
No Chair, nothing at this time.
Okay.
Did just want to note that we have a new item on the agenda. Actually, first one, 3A, and we have the Auditor's Team when we get to that, ready to talk a little bit about that.
3A is a new item?
Yes.
Okay. Commissioner Mejia.
Thank you. I just want to give the Board a heads up that we will be receiving public testimony from staff at Inner City Transit in regards to the CCA and kind of the impacts that they would get, and it's going to be more of an informational session, informational public testimony.
Okay, so this, we'll have our no electioneering advisement, but they're going to provide information as I understand it, and they will be hopefully respectful of that rule that we have about electioneering during campaign season. Okay. Let's see. Then let's go to Item 3A, which is a new item, auditor item, Presentation of the 2025 Midterm Preliminary Budget.
Yeah, and we have Joe Wolfe here. You want to come up and join us? Thank you, Joe. And as Joe's coming up, Commissioners, this is annually what needs to be presented to the Board, and I want to thank Joe, and I see Diana, freshly back from well-deserved rest, and then of course Mary, who leads the team. We're really thankful for the collaboration, hard work, and Joe, I'll hand over to you to give a quick overview.
Sure, that sounds good. Thank you, Leonard. And good morning, ladies and gentlemen of the Commission. My name's Joe Wolfe. I'm with the Thurston County Auditor's Office, and this consent item is our, probably the first time that we've done this here at Thurston County, but this is the Auditor's Office's submittal of the preliminary budget as required by RCW 3640. So it'll be a short presentation. I think we've got seven slides for you. Go over the statute and go over what the submittal was to Leonard and his team, and move to accept it, and move forward with the budget proceedings.
Just a procedural kind of thing in terms of slides, if it's on consent, does it need to be pulled out to a department item? This is really a more of a just a process of the Board receiving it and accepting the report. So we believe that it's good on consent?
Yeah, I think that makes sense. We, I think originally had entered it as a department item, but I was glad to see it moved over to the consent agenda because it is pretty straightforward.
So you won't be presenting slides? So there's no slides.
That sounds great.
Doesn't your clarifying, Ross?
That's why I should clarify.
Where's the opportunity?
Where does that presentation fit in the approval of a consent agenda?
If you want to move it to department item, it's up to you.
Well, can we see those slides now? Or, I mean, I don't know, I mean...
Yeah, why is it not like moving like yesterday?
We need the information.
Partly because, oh, so just to speak to that, Commissioner Fournier, our team's been working to get the information. In a normal budget process, this would have been presented earlier, and so truly to no fault of the Auditor's Team, the official action is to receive it. We're working on a kind of the new partnership between the Auditor's Office and the Budget Team. Normally, it would have been rolled into something that the Budget Team would have presented several weeks earlier at this timeframe.
So I don't care when we receive the information, whether it's this morning, whether it's a department item this afternoon. We could do it, but I mean, it seems like if you've prepared slides, we should see those.
Okay, fair enough.
I don't know.
Do you have them to show to go through?
I don't have that, but Joe and I can connect and get the slides.
Yep.
And then into the meeting this afternoon.
Okay, and then?
We'll just move this to department items so you can go through the slides.
I think that makes more sense. Not that it's controversial necessarily, but just so that's just how the structure is. If more information and staff and Q and A is anticipated, put it on as department item. Commissioner Mejia, I saw your hand.
I was going to say put it on as a presentation, but never mind because we still have to approve it, so it has to be a department item.
Okay. We tack on to the end of this meeting, saying it's short.
Yeah, I mean, if you, Amy, I mean, is there?
We have it ready. Once we get through, yeah, we'll pull it up. Joe, do you mind sticking around for a minute?
Absolutely.
Stick around for half an hour or something, and we'll slot you back in, and then we can keep it on consent.
Yeah, and Commissioners, we apologize for the awkwardness of it. It's just that our normal cycle with the information that we've been gathering, and no fault of the Auditor's Team, we're, like with the budget cycle, we're a little bit behind, but we'll catch up and happy to, Joe, if you're free, we can do that after the agenda.
Yeah, that sounds great. Again, this is really going to be straightforward, so whenever we want to do it.
All right. Well, I don't think it's going to take us too long to get there.
Okay, sounds good.
And then Amy, is there a way for you to get the?
Yeah, would you mind sending them to me?
Absolutely.
Here, let me catch up with you real quick. I can tell you exactly where it's, yeah. Okay.
All right. Thank you. Okay, so we'll swing back to that item, but at this point, we'll go to 3B, Central Services, Inter-Agency Agreement with Department of Enterprise Services Energy Program.
Good morning, Commissioners. Any questions?
Good morning.
Hold on, I have Bruce in the boardroom. Who's presenting?
I'm just sitting. Rick has the meat of the material, so introducing a inter-agency agreement with the Synergy Program. So we have access to their programs. There's no cost associated with this agreement. Rick can provide all the details.
Go ahead, Rick.
Yes, good morning Commissioners, and thank you, Bruce. Brooke Thomas, Capital Projects Planning Manager. As Bruce was describing, this is an inter-agency agreement that will allow the county to tap into some of the different resources and services that DES has, particularly when it comes to doing energy audits on buildings or energy savings performance contracts. And so this is just a master agreement that will allow us in the future to use those services, and if we do choose to use any of their contracts, those types of actions would be brought back to the Board specifically for a project that might come up in the future. If there are any questions?
Questions for Rick? Nope, doesn't look like it. Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
3C is CPED, HCP Contract, Capital Land Trust. Oh, not Marissa, Ashley.
Hi. Good morning, Ashley Rye, Interim Director of Community Planning and Economic Development. This is the first of four contracts that you have on your consent agenda, all related to the same thing, partnering with our local conservation organizations to implement the Habitat Conservation Program as was identified in the HCP that the county adopted. So these convenience use contracts operate very similar to the on-call contracts that were just referenced, and allow us to work proactively with our partners to get easements established on our HCP lands, and then get all the tasks completed throughout the course of the year, whether that's mowing, getting grazing out there, or restoring the sites with all the appropriate vegetation. Happy to answer questions.
Questions, and this covers C, D, E, and F?
Yep, so we have Capital Land Trust, Center for Natural Lands Management, Eco Studies, as well as WSU Extension for Early Blue Violet area.
Can I just jump in? This information has been presented to the Board, and the question was, did it go through the appropriate RFP processes? And they, these did. That question was answered in the affirmative.
Any other questions for Ashley? Nope, thank you.
Thanks.
All right, we're up to Item G, Human Resources, and there's G and H under Human Resources. First one's Resolution to Reclassify Position 25R 00614.
Good morning Commissioners. Tara Wickline, Compensation and Benefits Manager, here to present a couple of reclassification requests. The first one is from Central Services, and we have Bruce here if there are any real specific questions, but they are requesting to reclassify a Capital Projects Manager to a Procurement and Contract Specialist 2. This is a decrease to the budget of about $400. And do you have any specific questions about the request?
Nope.
Thank you. So then the second request is from Public Defense. They're requesting to reclassify a Legal Assistant 1 to a Legal Assistant 2. The request is stemming from the need to have a position that is able to answer more technical questions, handle the higher-level duties. The Legal Assistant 2 is one that would be able to fill in for the paralegals when they have vacation, things like that. This is also one that doesn't really have a impact to the general fund. This is one that is billed out to the TM BHASO, as Patrick explained last week. It's about a $3,000 budget impact, but again, that's billed out to TM BHASO.
Okay, we did a look at these last week. Any questions this morning from the Board?
Just one quick question, let me see. Is, in the past, have we identified the area where these positions are as far as, okay, out of the Prosecutor's Office or wherever, Public Defense, rather than just a position number? I'm just curious. It seems like we've had an identification that which entity is having the adjustments made.
Um, I've seen it done both ways. I know at some point in the past, I think it was normal practice to have the department name in the agenda item title, and we can certainly go back to doing that.
Because we are doing the public's work, I'd just say I think that would be better if it was always in there because the public has no idea our classification position numbers and what they might entail. So depends on what my seatmates have to say about it.
It's a simple add. We can, we can have that added in for clarity.
I don't have any objection to that. Makes sense to me. Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Tara.
Thanks.
That covers G and H. So we'll go to 3I, Public Health and Social Services, Amendment Number 1 with Herrera Environmental Consultants for Lake Lawrence, Cyano, Cyano Bacteria Management Plan, and Patterson and Offutt Lake Integrated Aquatic Vegetation Management Plans.
Good morning Commissioners. Stuart Woodford, Environmental Health Manager with Thurston County, Thurston Public Health. So this is a contract that we executed to handle Lake Management District Operations, and it's actually going quite well so far. The amendment is really to clean up some financial details that the finance team didn't have time to get inserted before we got the contract executed. And so the attorney reviewed those changes. He felt like they were improvements, and so that's what we have today, is just requesting her approval of the Amendment 1 to this contract.
Any questions for Stuart?
Thank you.
Item J is again, Community Planning and Economic Development, setting a public hearing for Grand Mound West UGA Expansion Land Use Rezone Amendments.
Ashley. Hi, Ashley Rye, again, Interim CPED Director. So as was discussed last week, this is setting a public hearing for a project that has been underway for a number of years, but the next step in the process is a public hearing before the Board, so that the Board has the option to take final action by the end of the year with that once-a-year comprehensive plan update package. The, this package proposals includes actually two UGA expansions, one to accommodate residential development and another one to accommodate industrial development. An e-brief was sent out yesterday, just with more background about the projects, and I'm happy to answer questions.
Questions from the Board? I did read the e-brief, and the attachment was, I think, the map, which I see. And I guess I'm just wondering, I know there was reference in there to traffic studies, and I'm just wondering, but there wasn't really, like, if I remember right, the bullet was kind of like, okay, questions were raised by WashDOT or whatever about this, and I guess at what point will we need to know more about that? I mean, like, see the study itself, or what the conclusions, staff's conclusions were about the questions that were raised? Like, is it, is it some point where we get presented that, or is that going to happen at the public hearing?
Public hearing will be the appropriate time to get any final, final letters from WashDOT and Commerce. They have both raised questions. We've been doing our best, working with the applicant and their consultant team to address those, and they've basically said that they will be submitting comment. We're hoping that the conditions that we're putting into MDNS will address WashDOT's concerns. They actually helped design the scope of the traffic study that was completed, so we really have been working proactively with them. But yeah, and Commerce is digging through a bunch of studies that we keep sending them regarding needs for residential land.
So those agencies might submit public comment?
Yep.
And that might be new based on changes you've made to conditions in the proposal?
It'll just be their final comment. So at this point, you know, we go back and forth. They send us information, but this is their opportunity, you know, when we issue CIPA and we hold a public hearing for them to submit their, their final formal comments on the projects.
And as is standard process, the staff is here to facilitate the process, not provide the outcome. And so we'll have the public hearing, and then we'll process all the comments that were received and have that conversation with the Board. So this is the next step in the process after the public hearing, is when the Board will have a chance to hear and have those comments processed and discussed.
Okay.
Long time coming. Nice job.
Thank you.
Looks like we're good for setting the hearing on the October 29th. Thank you.
Thanks.
K is Public Health and Social Services, setting a public hearing for 2025 Lake Management District Assessment Roles for Long Lake and Patterson Lake.
Good morning, Commissioners. Stuart Woodford, Environmental Health Manager. So this is a move to set a hearing for Tuesday, November 5th, 2024, 3:30 p.m., to accept and consider public comments on the 2025 proposed rate changes for Long Lake LMD #21 and Patterson Lake #23. So the changes are largely, they're fairly, fairly minor in scope, but for Patterson Lake, the main changes are a 5% across-the-board increase, and the other change is changing the classification of one of the Trowbridge properties from lakefront to conservancy, which saves him, you know, a significant amount of money, which I know he's very happy about. The Long Lake changes are, there's a lot of parcels that have been developed now, so they're being added and assessed as part of the LMD process, and they, so a lot of changes within the LMD are being, you know, updated there, and they are not seeking a rate increase there. So anyways, that's what we have there. Some requests your support of setting a public hearing November 5th.
Okay.
I can, I just want to thank Stuart for carrying the water on this one, unintended. But just as a reminder to the Board that any time that there isn't a change to the assessment roles is, does trigger the need for a public hearing. If there were no changes from any of the LMDs, it would be a non-issue. So that's why you're only seeing two of four. There are no changes for the other two LMDs.
Okay, any questions on Item K from the Board? No. Okay, thank you. So, Department Item, first one up is 4A Emergency Services, Medical and Training Equipment, Mannequins, and Simulation.
Good morning Commissioners. This morning, I'm going to hand it over to Juan Mejias to do the presentation on our three items, and I'll let him introduce himself.
Good morning, everyone. Commissioners. My name is Juan Mejias. I'm the new ALS Program Manager, and my new ID started back in January, but still very new, I assure you. This is a repeat item, these next three. This one was presented last week. This is the Medical One Training Equipment, Mannequins, and Simulation. This is essentially us bolstering our education program for the next, I would say, few, quite few years. These things tend to last pretty long. This is going to allow us to provide real-time simulation with a very realistic patient setting with, in a controlled environment. Right now, this is going through a cooperative purchasing agreement using our EMS levy funds, which that budget was approved in the '24-'25 biennium by our EMS Council. This has gone through the procurement process, internal auditor's office, contracts, risk, and PAO, and the amount with tax is $92,884.15. There weren't too many questions last week. Are there any questions for today?
New questions on the mannequins, training equipment? Nope. Okay, good to go to the next one?
Absolutely. Thank you. The next two, if I could pair them, these are from the same vendor, although it's sole source. This goes back to preventative, I'm sorry, professional maintenance, contracts for our power load systems, which are our gurneys, and also our cardiac life support monitors, so critical medical equipment that's used daily. As my director alluded to last week, we did have increases from 2019. Specifically, the cardiac monitors went up 46% from when we had the initial contract purchase in 2019, and the power load systems went up 53% from 2019. So the total numbers for those, the cardiac monitors, professional service and maintenance contract comes to $149,029.24, and the Stryker Power Load System comes to $271,030.32. This is on sole source. This is just renewing the contracts from 2019. Were there any questions regarding these?
Okay, so the numbers you gave are not the numbers here, my...
I'll just, I'll click on this one. So if you notice, there's two numbers that are given. One is the, the total and then plus tax. What we just gave you was the total dollar figure combining those two. We apologize for that. We'll make sure that those are updated.
What's the second number you had there for C? Like $148,000 or something? I got it, I got it. Okay, any questions from the Board on B or C? Nope.
If it's okay with the Board, would it be agreeable to move these to the consent agenda?
I'm good with that.
All right, consent agenda. I see. Commissioner Edwards?
Yes, that's fine.
Okay. Commissioner Claus, thumbs up. Perfect. Okay, so you won't have to do this in the, pardon me today. I remember you from new employee orientation, so awesome. Thanks for your...
Good things about you, too.
Thank you, Commissioners. You're welcome here.
Great, awesome.
Thank you very much.
All right, so that gets us to Public Health and Social Services, 5A, which will be renumbered with our new changes here, but at this point, 5A on the draft agenda is Amendment Number 22 to Washington State Department of Health Consolidated Contract.
Good morning, Dr. Jen Freihight, the interim Director of Public Health and Social Services. This is a request to approve Amendment Number 22 to the Washington State Department of Health Consolidated Contract for $2,188,633. And there are several line items in this, of which I will briefly detail. All of these allocations are taken into consideration during the '24-'25 budget preparation. So the primary increase mentioned is, pertains to ongoing FPHS funding for the new state fiscal year, and this is primarily funding staff. There is the ELC funding mentioned, which is a rollover of funding specific to COVID, and is allowing for the use of the remaining balance by extending the end date. And the COVID vaccines are for funding, is for education and outreach for the community surrounding COVID-19 vaccinations. Then there's the Perinatal Hepatitis B funding and BFC Operations Vaccine for Improvement Project, both smaller funds that we receive annually, and they support staff time to meet those deliverables in the CONCON. The Public Health Emergency Preparedness Funds were mentioned. There is no increase to that funding amount. It was just an amendment to the Statement of Work. And finally, there was the renewal of our MCH Block Grant Funds for the period of October 1, 2024, through December 31, 2024. And with these funds, we pay for a portion of the children, youth with special healthcare needs, work, and a .9 FTE nurse for Thurston County NFP nurse. And we also use these funds for systems work, such as the Partners Committee work that we do to reduce child abuse. There's a lot packed in there, and I can answer any questions.
Questions for Jen? Nope. Thank you.
All right, great. Thank you.
That is the end of the business items. We can circle back to the auditor item, but before we do that, the, we do have a meeting at 5:00 with Lacy, and that's taking place at Lacy.
Yes.
And I just wanted to clarify, there was a question from Commissioner Mejia, a good question about clarifying our ability to take legislative action outside of the boardroom.
Yeah, we did research that, and I'll go ahead and allow the clerk to, she ran it through our legal team. Yeah, we did research that and I'll go ahead and allow the clerk to, she ran it through our legal team.
Yeah, we confirmed with legal that we are able to take actions that are included on the agenda.
And they're connected to, like, it's one of those things where there's a reason to have it there because it's a
It relates to that area.
It's a nexus. And so then we can take action on.
We're not meeting there to talk about something that's happening in Olympia. We're meeting there to talk about something that affects the city and their jurisdiction. So, yeah.
What we had in the past was a situ, so we, we definitely can, a legal opinion was that we could have a meeting in a place, and not every single item had to be, like, we could talk about another item even as long as there was a generalized nexus with why we were having the meeting there. But then taking legislative action on an unrelated item was kind of slightly gray area. And that's why we, we're just making sure that we doubled back because that was some years ago.
Thank you for flagging that because I think then it brings up, well, I don't know there's any action to be taken, but there are a couple of other discussion points that the city manager made me aware of this morning. Emailed those out to you, which was the Martin Way corridor. He had brought that up in our conversation chair with the mayor and also the public response.
Abatement Council.
Abatement Council.
Is that going to be brought up?
Yeah, I don't know what the specifics are that they want to bring up, but they said it, they'd mention as a topic.
Council, it seems somewhat antiquated. When you could just put a screen in this room and have the screen showing us, you know, in the boardroom in Lacy, and would that suffice?
Yeah, that's, I know, it's, it's a little bit weird with the virtual options we have. But I guess my quest, next question is, is it going to be recommendation of staff? Or I know it's always within the board's purview, but is there an anticipation that we would take this legislative? If, if public comments all in favor or there's no public comment, are we going to be, is it going to be suggested by you or, or someone else that we make the, the annexation decision today, tonight? I know Lacy said they were planning to do that. And I, I let them know in our meeting that the board may or may not do that. We don't know. Sometimes we do it right after the public hearing.
Wouldn't there be more than one meeting that would take place, the decisions? Like, like we, you know, like, to make something official, wouldn't there be subsequent meetings where you would have additional?
Agenda, is it?
Can't just.
Necessarily, you can't just wave your hand in one meeting.
Sometimes at the end of a public hearing, there's, if nobody's got any reason to, to do anything different than the proposed action, we just go ahead and pass the motion.
Drafted and there would be, right?
Well, that's what I'm asking. I mean, sometimes right in the public hearing script I get, there's some proposed action with a motion and we take that motion. And I didn't, I just didn't know if that's something we were trying to do to match what Lacy's doing or we're, we're going to do it, bring it back and have it or do it at a later time. It doesn't matter. I just want to be prepared.
Yeah, I think the, it, it really is your, your discretion. You can take an action. Today, it's listed as an item for, for action. I think you're signaling to the mayor and city manager that you may or may not, we kept it open that you could, you could say, we're going to take it back to our meeting. But they will be presenting the information. We believe that the information, they, the city staff work with our staff. So there are no surprises on that. And pending any major public questions or things that raise doubt in commissioners, you could act tonight if you'd like and we can fill the script so that you can do that.
Because it's posted. Sometimes I would have a, I know that we, I basically said, I'm going to let the mayor of Lacy, since we're in their home field, I'm going to let him kind of chair the meeting for the most part. But if it gets to a point where the board wants to take action, then he would pass the baton to me and I would basically, we would act. We could act at that meeting legislatively. We have that purview. And, and then we, I would sort of direct that traffic, so to speak, and.
We can present a script for you to act or not to act because I know that you, you know, that the perspective is that you may get public comment that cause you to think one way or the other. So why don't we have both ready for you and then you can direct the traffic either way you'd like.
That tends to be how it is.
Action could be to kick him, to draft language, to kick him back here at the next meeting and make the final decision at this meeting.
It could be, I don't know that we need to do, take any action to do that. I mean, it's just a matter that's pending and we would tee it up at a later time. Because usually it's like, if, if any commissioner hears, I mean, unless there's a time sensitivity, I don't think there is. If any commissioner, it's been our practice, has a, like, hey, I really want to look, you know, citizen A said X and I want to look into that before I, I vote, you know, can we delay this for a week or two? We almost always accommodate that. There's not a reason not to. But sometimes it's like, you know, nobody wants to wait. If there's no reason, we don't hear anything we didn't already think about or our decision's made and then it just gets done. So anyway, since, since we're not here, I just wanted to see if, what the board, if they wanted to keep it open or if the commissioner already knew they weren't going to feel comfortable taking action tonight.
Just another note that it's posted in the legal notice that the board may take action at the public hearing or at any regularly posted meeting after.
You have options. So we'll create a script for both ways, how you want it. But I don't want to interfere with you getting input from your peers.
And Commissioner Fournier is basically suggesting, is, is there anything else that needs to be? There's nothing, no reason we can't make a motion tonight. There's no, like, legal document we're waiting for that would need to be prepared in advance of legislative action. Other commissioners, any questions on that?
Yes.
Yes, go ahead, Commissioner Edwards.
Is there a time element that is affecting this, that we're doing it together with the city of Lacy? I mean, are we up against some kind of a hard stop of any kind? That's. And are we going to have legal at that meeting? Or have we, we, we apparently, according to staff, have looked, have asked legal and they say we're okay to take legislative action. I guess I'm just asking, is there a time element involved, one way or the other?
Just provide a couple of clarifications. The official meeting starts at 6 o'clock. We're going to be there at 5 because, between 5 and 6, because they're hosting commissioners. I think they're going to have some light refreshments for all of you.
This is when they have the, the Polish delegation there from their sister city as well?
I don't, I don't know. The Polish delegation will be between 5 and 6.
I believe some members will be.
Yeah, but they're, they're going to do this part of their official meeting. So what they told us is they're going to try to get through that part fairly quickly. And then this is the agenda for their meeting. Commissioner Edwards' comment, we don't have an end time because I think it's going to go as long as the public hearing needs to go.
I think he means is there a need to, to prove this, like legislatively? Like, is there any reason why the annexation needs to get done?
Like, we pass it, there's got to be read twice, there's a three-week cooling period.
There's just some.
Procedurally, the clerk has, has already communicated that you guys can act tonight. I'm sure the city of Lacy would want you to act tonight because they're interested in getting this going. But it's also your prerogative to say, we're going to hear everything and then take it back in our next regular meeting. You guys can then agendize it and act then. You have the flexibility. Is a reminder to the board too, this, this annexation via the ILA method is at the request of the Board of County Commissioners because the Board of County Commissioners did not protest an annexation that was, that went through the other channels with the PRPC, if I recall correctly. And so this was an agreement that if you annex this, then we will go through a process to actually take care of the, the, the Donut Hall or the islands that were subsequently created. So they are following through on that one.
Chair?
Yes, sir.
I guess you're right. I'm, I'm wondering about the time element. I just see we're on somebody's radar again on this technical stuff. And that's the only reason I'm asking. Are we, are we covered to take an action tonight if we want to? And when we're 100% legal, that's where my question, the legal always comes in.
Based on the clerk's interaction, we are absolutely 100% able to take this action.
Okay. Then from my perspective, I believe.
We have written from our attorneys, so.
Good enough. Okay, that's what I was looking for.
No hesitation. Really, it's a discretionary decision about, you guys want to act? We'll prepare a script so that you can fill that either way.
Yeah, I'm just, I'm just laying this out so that the board, my seatmates know that we've teed it up such that we can just do it the way we do it as if we were in here. You can decide to ask for additional time or we can just make a motion. So hopefully we'll, we'll do that just the way it normally would proceed, even though we're at Lacy City Hall.
We'll have both scripts for you, Chair.
Thank you.
Yep.
All right. Perfect. So that takes us to item two, Proclamations and Orders.
Good morning, Amy Davis, Clerk of the Board. For this afternoon's proclamation, we will have Christy Peters, the county staff from the PAO's office, Kalen Cecile, DB Lead Attorney, DCA's Nicole Pritikin and Isaac Fortunato, victim advocate Kim Carroll, paralegal Tanya Sullivan, and few other interns. Also have Chief Mansillas and Deputy Pam Clark from the Sheriff's Office.
All right. And then we've got flood awareness coming on the 15th. Any other questions for this item? Nope. Then we go to advisory boards and commissioners.
I have no updates this morning.
No updates there. Commissioner Items?
I have one item.
Yes, sir.
Today is Matt Roundsley's birthday. Happy birthday, Matt.
Happy birthday, Matt.
Thanks.
That's awesome. Okay. Thank you. Anything else from commissioners this morning?
Are we going to do the budget presentation?
Oh, right. Thank you.
Yeah, so we can invite Joe back up.
Come on back.
Just to, you know, I appreciate, you know, Joe is, how many months into, on the auditors team back again? Two months?
Yeah.
So he's still kind of learning the ropes. For the consent item, we normally don't do presentations. He's put some things together. And we'll just add that in the quickness of, and appreciate his hustle because he's been working on some deadlines and our, our budget team hasn't reviewed this, so we'll go through it and to continue to identify our, our partnership as we work through things.
Is that bad?
No.
Did I lost all my, my commissioners up there? Okay, you're just pulling up the presentation. Okay, got it. Sure we didn't lose our, lose our quorum there.
Okay. Well, again, ladies and gentlemen, Commissioner Fournier, Joe Wolf, here to present and hand over the 2025 midterm preliminary budget. So this is the Auditor's Office submission to the Commission as required by RCW 3640. And specifically, it's 3640050 that we're at right now. So I'll just say, next slide? Okay, so next slide. We'll get right into it. I'm going to try to make this brief since it is kind of an anomaly, it sounds like, to do it this way. But our presentation really is just four parts. We've got the county budget statutory framework, so a little bit of an overview of 3640, which I'm sure you're familiar with because we've talked a bit about the MOU that we're putting in place to implement that law. Then an overview of the budget documents, which are all system-generated documents and very much consistent with what Leonard and Summer presented yesterday. Then an overview of the budget team and what you were talking about, Leonard, our, our, our partnership and who, who really is involved. And then some next steps, which I think you went over in a much more detail than I'm going to today when you presented yesterday. So under 3640040, we prepare, the county auditor, CFO prepares the preliminary county budget, which as it states, sets forth the complete financial program and shows all expenditures and sources of revenue by which it is to be financed. So those are the words of the law and what the reports achieve out of the system. So that's what's been submitted. And 36050, again, is where we, we kind of hand this off to you. That's where we're at today. I thought you were going to say something, Diana? No? Okay. Okay. And a couple of, a couple of pieces. So you all are probably familiar with this. But one of the things that stood out to me a little bit is the fact that we're using kind of a modified budget schedule where we're adopting in December. That's another part of 3640. It's 071. And wanted to just kind of point that out because we are on a, maybe a little bit later of a schedule than some counties. But I do believe most counties use this, this schedule. So we're not an anomaly, but it is a special process and we utilize a biennial budget.
So that's how we've done it before.
Exactly. Yeah, I think we've done it.
Every year for years.
Years.
At least back to 1978.
So it's not, it's not an anomaly. It's standard. It's pretty standard and it's just a special provision of law that allows us to do that. So if you're reading that law and it's, and you're thinking, why are we not doing this in September? Why are we not passing it in October? That's why. And again, it's standard practice. So. Jump up two slides. And go back one. It's a little overview. So what you have is our statement of estimates reports as required by law. This is also known as the RCW report when you get into the reports that are being generated by the system. We have our list of change requests, which I think you're going to be really interested in. There are, there are many, many change requests this time around. A lot of them are on the capital side. So there are actually two reports. You've got what's called a recommendation summary for operating and a recommendation summary for capital. And that details the asks at the carryforward level, which is really just baseline operations, maintenance level, which is continuing to maintain baseline operations considering things like inflation, things like caseload increases. I think you had asked a question about that yesterday, Commissioner Fournier. So that's really high-level overview of what those levels are. And then the fund balance report. And this is a system-generated report that projects ending fund balances for 24 and 25. And on that note, go to, go ahead and go to the next slide. The general fund balance that we, we are showing in the reports is about $24.1 million. And that's what Leonard went over yesterday. There is another fund balance, a general fund balance that is used by the Financial Management Committee. And the last, the last version of that that was presented, I think at the end of July, estimated that ending fund balance to be around $31.2 million, so a little bit higher. And our financial services manager, Darren Bennett, went through that yesterday, went through the calculations and updated it and estimates it to be around 30 million. He'll continue to refine that and we'll be sharing that with FMC, I believe, in October. So soon. And we'll continue to work with Summer, Robin and the budget team to, on, on that fund balance and understanding kind of the, the assumptions that went into both sides of that or both different, different estimates. So next slide, Amy. As I said, I was going to go over the budget team. Mary Hall being the auditor, Leonard Hernandez being the county manager, kind of our leaders on the respective sides. Diana Benson, who's here with me today from the Auditor's Office, is the chief deputy and has been very involved in budget over the years and has been a great mentor to me. So thank you.
And Auditor Hall is in another meeting right this moment and Darren is with Sierra Cedar, so.
Right.
So we're here.
I think everybody's grinding, especially working on that new system. It's, it's going to be powerful and that involves a lot of hours to really get it right and understand it. And then we have our, our budget team. So Joe Wolf, I'm, I'm the lead for the Auditor's Office and Summer Miller, the, the budget manager for the county. And then her team, Jennifer and Dolly are here as well. And next slide, please, Amy. This is a really high-level overview of the activities and dates, kind of the next steps, culminating with the commissioners, your, this body adopting the operating capital budgets in December. And we will hopefully continue to negotiate the MOU for implementation of law and, and ensuring that there's clarity in, in this process. So with the goal of having that in place and this partnership established as we're developing this budget. And with that, just to open it up to questions.
Questions for Joe?
Oh, yes.
Go ahead, Commissioner Edwards.
Well, I don't know if it's for Joe or maybe it's for the county manager or the both of them. Do these numbers that were just presented match what we got yesterday?
The beginning fund balance and the FMC projection is slightly different. I believe what was presented yesterday was a, in the I believe what was presented yesterday is in the magnitude of twenty-four million dollars ending fund balance for FY twenty-four. And the FMC estimate is at thirty million dollars, so it is slightly, what we presented today is slightly higher.
And then my next question would be, okay, we've got a few things to iron out yet. Is that perfectly okay under the statute? I mean, we're, our numbers don't have to match at this point. We're still wrestling with this.
Yeah, I I think that's a true statement, Commissioner Edwards. At this point, we're, again, we're handing it off to the Board of County Commissioners to make decisions about what's been requested. And throughout that process, we will continue to to work with you all, work with this team to to revise the numbers, to not provide any advice on on those budget requests that are, have been made. Really working closely with you and to meet any needs you might have. But yeah, Commissioner Edwards, we will continue to refine that. And I think.
Okay, thank you. Thank you.
Other questions?
So it is early in the process, and usually Robin and Darren are pretty close. And they are different factors. So for instance, and as you get closer in your decision-making process, historically, you've built in what the typical reversion is. Those types of things are included in Darren's calculations. And I believe the budget team is presenting as if everybody spent every dollar what they're expecting to be spent.
No, we have not. No, that is not a true statement.
We have a difference that we'll continue to work through and make sure that the commissioners have the best, accurate information.
Okay. And the number that we're talking about is the projected ending general fund balance for twenty-twenty-four.
Where are you going to start the year with?
And that's the number that we often talk about, how you and Darren's, you know, use different methodologies.
Definitely very close.
But it sounds like it's not quite as close this year.
And that's the big discussion about the numbers from last year as well, is that.
I do think this item should be on on consent calendar, commissioners. This is not, I think what we're talking about is procedural differences, and we have, we are at risk of confusing the public. That what what the auditor role is, is to submit us data and information, and I appreciate the work that they've done to do that. They've done a good job. We're not on our normal cycle.
This is a handoff.
Yeah.
We need to let it, let it go. Yeah.
So I think.
Take the, take the ball and then continue working. That's right.
I think on a consent order to receive it, because I think what we present at this point with where we're at on the timeframe and the schedule, just don't want to create more confusion.
Yeah, I agree.
Yep, no problem. Any questions from the board? So this will remain item three A. Yeah, and you won't have to worry about this, but I just thought the board should see what you had prepared.
Yeah, I appreciate that. Thanks.
This is kind of a new piece of the process.
Right.
From prior years. So thank you for being here and hanging out and catching this up here at the Allen.
It's been good, and thank you for the patience as we navigate this new process.
All right, very good. Yeah, we really do appreciate that partnership. Okay, so other commissioner items this morning before we adjourn? Two PM back here. Commissioner Claus, you'll be virtual for that? Correct?
Yes, I will.
Will you be able to attend the Lacy thing virtually, or are you not attending that?
Um, I am going to do my best to attend that virtually, yes.
Okay, well, we'll see what, I'll I'll give Lacy a heads up on that.
Corey's done that. That's perfect. Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
We're at the end of the agenda, and we're adjourned.